If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here. That's item one on our agenda. We do have a quorum of our board team. Our second item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Pastor Stan Whites, who's the senior pastor at Sierra Vista United Methodist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
First of all, thank you so very much for letting me come and invite God into our presence. So would you bow your hearts as we pray? Most gracious and loving God, we gather this evening under the great umbrella of your love and presence. Lord, we're all your children, and you're truly one who seeks to offer hope and promise to each and every one of us. Lord, we give you thanks for the countless ways that you have and continue to bless us through the beauty of your creation, those precious individuals that we're so blessed to journey with, and the innumerable opportunities that you offer us each day to grow and stretch and serve. Heavenly Father, we especially give you thanks for every child and young person in our community. We know that you've placed within them great potential for development and achievement. They, through the power of your Holy Spirit, are the keys to unlock a brighter future for our community, our nation, our world. And Lord, we especially want to lift up these leaders this evening, as well as all the people and programs and resources that they have been given responsibility over. Lord, we ask that you allow your Holy Spirit to fall upon them in every conversation, every decision that's made this evening. Bless them and provide divine guidance for the work and deliberations that lay before them. Lord, we ask all of this in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate that very much. Next, we have our pledges. We're honored this evening to have a bunch of great fifth graders from Crockett. If they'll start coming forward, I'll introduce them. We have Cash Visney, Damani Mariz, Rosalyn Acosta, and Chloe Day.
Honor, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Hang on, hang on. If anybody wants to take a picture, y'all come up and I'll just make them stay there. Yeah, you can come closer. I always tell them that speak loud, and I'm not leading, and they did a great job. Who knows? Thanks again for y'all. And parents, thanks for -- and grandparents, thanks for making sure they got here. We appreciate everyone being here. At least one of them said that they were hoping they didn't have to stay for our whole meeting. So that takes care of that. Let me read our script, if I can find it. Good evening and welcome. As the board president, the board of trustees of San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome everyone who's present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might by chance be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening will be -- have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the board of trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. We certainly welcome public comment. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments at that time. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item or item not on our agenda should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings will be recorded and will become a part of our permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect our proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. And I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to invite you to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. Dr. Detloff, let's go to item three, item four, which is recognitions.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Lehman and members of the board. Tonight, we are very excited to provide you the culminating event in our month-long celebration. This is phase two of our celebration honoring our board of trustees. And so tonight, I want to provide a video and certainly to highlight the work of our board. Let me remind our audience that our first phase of this celebration included an evening dinner last week, and at that dinner, that was created by our Culinary Arts Department at Central High School. Also, we had table decorations that were provided by the floral design class at Lakeview High School as well. So one of the exciting things our board does is also approve our courses and classes. And we had a wonderful meal provided by the culinary department at Central High School. But I do want to highlight also that our board of trustees last year approved a course at Lakeview, the Lakeview Culinary Arts Course, and started off with 18 students, and we are projecting 50 next year. So that's just one highlight that our board of trustees creates for us as a school district. So we thank you for that. January is School Board Recognition Month. This year's theme, as designated by the Texas Association of School Boards, is launching the next generation. On behalf of San Angelo Independent School District, it is a privilege to say thank you to Lanny Lehman, Gerard Gallegos, Amy Mizell Flint, Bill Dindel, Max Parker, Art Hernandez, and Dr. Taylor Kingman for the part you play in fulfilling our district's mission to produce future-ready graduates. Thank you for making sure that every child receives a relevant and inspiring education and ensuring that our students are ready for the world and its challenges. You are leaders who care deeply about our community, who invest your time and talent to the work that matters the most for our future, this most noble profession, educating our children so they will be the next generation of leaders in San Angelo, our state, nation, and our world. At this time, we would like to share a slideshow featuring students from every SAISD school sending you their thanks and best wishes. Once again, we just want to extend our heartfelt thanks to our board of trustees. Recently, I read an article, what school boards do really does make a difference. And in that article, it highlighted that a unified, dedicated, and experienced school board can be responsible for almost a two-digit gain in student performance just by their experience and a consistent board. So that article really points out what we in SAISD know, that the board in SAISD has about an average of 11 years' experience, ranging from really four years to all the way to about 18 years of experience on our board. And what school boards do really does make a difference because we know that those high expectations that you set for our leadership team cause us to wake up in the morning and want to do a better job for our kids. So we understand that the impact you make is solely responsible for those gains in the academic performance that we make. And now there's research that backs that up. So we want to thank you for that. As we travel in circles around the state in statewide meetings, it rings true, and it's crystal clear that we are blessed in San Angelo to have such a dedicated school board. So we want to continue to honor the work that you do this evening and throughout the month. And we know we are extremely fortunate that you provide the governance, policy, and for us, the high expectations to meet students where they are and to really accomplish our mission of engaging students in an inspiring and relevant education to prepare them to be future-ready graduates. So we are extremely thankful for you, and we know that San Angelo ISD is very fortunate to have you all as elected officials govern our school system. So we thank you for that, and it's just a treasure and a blessing for us to work with you every day because you simply make us better. So thank you for that. And now, we would like to honor each of you by presenting you with a certificate appreciation for your service. When I call your name, please join us at the front to receive your certificate. Please remain standing for a group picture after everyone's name is called. Mr. Gerard Gallegos. Mrs. Amy Mizell Flint. Mr. Bill Dindel. Mr. Lanny Lehman. Mr. Max Parker. Mr. Art Hernandez. And Dr. Taylor Kingman. Thank you for your commitment and support, and we honor you this month and every month until the next decade. How does that sound? A tenure contract for all of you. Okay, we have a certificate. And that concludes this evening's school board recognition. And as our trustees are making their way back to their spot, I will turn the board meeting back over to Mr. Lehman.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff, and thanks to your team for their recognition. We appreciate that very much. Our next item, our second staff recognition, Dr. Gomez is going to do. Thanks, Farah.
Well, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, for tonight's staff recognition, TASBO, the Texas Association of School Business Officials, has certified one of our very own with a new level of professional certification. TASBO certification is earned through a combination of specified coursework, school business experience, training in an area of specialization, and active membership in the association. This evening, we are pleased to recognize Mrs. Angel Perez for earning the distinction of Certified Texas School Business Specialist with a specialty in personnel. So Angel, if you'd please come forward. And Dr. Detloff, if you would please present Mrs. Perez with her new certificate. Congratulations. You have to make the handshake, too.
Item five is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
No, no approval.
Second.
So we have a motion for Mr. Dindel and a second for Mr. Hernandez to approve the minutes of our December 9, 2019 Special Finance and Pre-Agenda Workshop, as well as our December 16, 2019 regular board meeting. Are there corrections or comments by any of our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is, I referred to earlier in my comments, is there anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening? Now would be a great time to come forward. I see no one wishing to do so, so we'll move to reports. Item A of our student enrollment report, that's provided in our Friday facts that board members get. We also got our second six weeks report. Our student enrollment report only indicated that we were up about 36 students, I think, and 32, thank you. So historically, at least previously this year, we've been up close to 100. So maybe that's just an anomaly, and we're going to be back up. But certainly, we thank the public for entrusting us with educating their children, and we are up as opposed to last year. Our second six weeks average daily attendance report indicated that we did a little bit better than we did the same timeframe last year. We made some comments last week about perhaps flu season was a little bit later getting started this year. And then all I've heard this week in the news is talking about flu season. So hopefully, we can continue to have as many students attend and keep everybody well. Our third report this evening is an update on academic progress, and Dr. Ritter's going to help us with that. Jana?
Thank you. Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, we're happy tonight to present to you the San Angelo ISD Literacy Support Initiative as an update to you with the work that we have been doing in collaboration with Scholastic with the coaching that we're providing to our teachers at all of our elementary schools and our middle schools this year. And with me, I have our Curriculum and Instruction Team for the Humanities, English Language Arts, and Reading for elementary and for secondary. And I'm going to ask each of them as they take the mic to reintroduce themselves. But we do have Candy Callis, who is Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, Cherie Braden, Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, Michelle Castro, Secondary ELAR Humanities Content Coordinator, and Stacy Lamkin, who is our ELAR Humanities Content Coordinator for elementary. So tonight, and just in response to the needs of our students and with the commitment from you, the support that you have provided us as we look at the evidence of the needs of our students, as you know, we're on about we're going on year four of an initiative with really focusing on literacy and improving our reading levels across our district. We now are seeing our students as they progress through and matriculate through our system, that we are now seeing kids in our middle schools who were served through this in our elementaries. And we are hearing such incredible feedback from our teachers and our administrators at those middle school campuses. They are saying they can really tell a difference with the students who are coming into their classrooms, and they just see such a remarkable difference in students really starting to love reading again and that they are showing just an increase in not just the interest, but also in their ability to read. We are seeing an increase in those reading levels, which we know will translate across all content areas and continue to improve as these students progress through our grade levels in the district. So we also see evidence of this as we do our learning walks. We've started today. We were at Lamar Elementary School, Altaloma, and Bel Air Elementaries. And at every single campus, as we walk those classrooms, we go into every single classroom in the district, and we are seeing evidence of what is happening with this partnership and with the collaboration that we have and the coaching and the improvement that we're seeing in the practice of teaching reading to our students. So with that said, we're going to just share a little bit, just a few details about this and show a video of one of our elementaries in action as well. So Cherie?
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the work we're doing at the elementaries. This year has been a game changer, I would say, at the elementary level as we've worked to bring in Fuentes and Pennell and working through true balanced literacy, bringing that back into our classrooms for students to have a true love of reading. So as we have brought that back in, we have really depended on the work that we do with our Scholastic coaches in working to build the capacity of our teachers in our classrooms and our leadership on our campuses so that everyone has the same learning going on across the district. So it doesn't matter if you're a second grader at one campus or another, you're going to have the same type of learning going on in your classrooms. So Scholastic has been huge in helping us with coaching our teachers. Every elementary campus has a coach assigned to them that's working with teachers individually through once-a-month coaching on their campus or through virtual coaching. The virtual coaching has allowed teachers to take a look at their own teaching and be a little more reflective in their practice before they're having a conversation with that coach on what they're seeing themselves. And sometimes, that's all it takes to see areas that you can improve. So we're hoping that that builds the capacity in our teachers to sustain great teaching and great learning for our students throughout the years. We'll always have new teachers coming in, so I do see that we'll need to continue our work with Scholastic as we have new people coming in. But building this learning for our teachers has just been critical. One thing in our meeting with Scholastic that one of the head people in Scholastic said last week was that coaching is truly a gift. And I really took that to heart because it really is. And when you think about coaching in the way of, you know, maybe a sports team. So maybe if we're thinking about football, for example, the coach of the team is your campus principal. They're leading the team, but it really benefits every player to have an individual coach working with them. So if I'm the quarterback of the team, it's really great for someone to come in and individually coach me on how to work that skill as a quarterback to be better at my job. So no matter how great a teacher is, there's always room for improvement, and the coaching truly is a gift to make us all better at what we do and love to do every day. So Stacy's going to talk a little bit about how we're using data to support this.
Well, one of the things, we go into classrooms and we see the evidence, we see the data with the students working on their reading, with them being pulled for guided reading groups. We get to experience all of that, but there's also that numbers component we know that we also have to pay attention to. And so I've been able to spend time recently going through the numbers for every classroom in the district, looking at our beginning-of-the-year NSGRA, which is our Next Step Guided Reading Assessment that we give every student, and then looking at the middle-of-the-year NSGRA data results that we just finished taking, and looking at the number of students who were on grade level at the beginning of the year versus now. And I'm happy to report that in every grade level we have seen some progress. So what our teachers are doing, what our students are doing is truly working, and it's being reflected not only in the things they're doing in the classroom, but also in the numbers when they're taking those assessments. So that's really exciting. And to finish, I have to share a story. This is probably one of my favorite stories now of all times. I was in a restaurant last week, and a family walked in, and they had three kids. And one of the boys was, he was a fourth grader, I found out, he had a book with him. And they walk into this restaurant, and that little boy immediately sits down and opens his book and starts reading. And I watch him, and the entire time that they're waiting for the food that they are ordering, that little boy is engrossed in his book. And I don't see that very often. And I know I have two sons, and I never saw that with them. So I walked over to the mother once I was leaving and said, I just have to tell you, I'm in education, and it makes my heart so happy to see your son reading. And she said, yes. She said, you- She said, "You won't believe it." She said, "He's never been like this before until this year." She said, "He's had more choice in what he is able to read, and now we can't get him to put his books down." She said, "There are many times when he has chosen to read his book rather than play video games." So what we're doing, and he was a student of SAISD, I did ask that. So what we're doing is truly working, and it's benefiting our kids, and it's so exciting to see. Thank you.
We have a video from Goliad Elementary to show.
To Goliad Elementary, home of the Eagles and our future Lakeview Chiefs, I'm Zach Ramirez, Principal here at Goliad. Ultimately, our main focus every single day is to create future-ready learners day in and day out. As an elementary, though, we feel like our charge is to foster the love of reading through many of our initiatives that we put in place here at Goliad over the last several years. When we started these initiatives, we knew that we had to gather the resources in order for teachers to implement it with fidelity, and that was starting with a robust literacy lounge with leveled readers for all levels across all grade levels. One of our initiatives is the Interactive Read Aloud. It's the student and the teacher interacting with the text. That's beneficial, because the teacher can help lead a conversation with the kids that they may not have been able to do independently, but they are also able to go beyond just the texts that are in the book and have deeper understanding of what they're reading.
How did they use teamwork to make them do more? So it's not a go-kart, but are they still able to go somewhere?
Similar to the Interactive Read Aloud, we've also implemented the Shared Reading, which is all kids and the teacher all have access to the same text, and they read it multiple times. And over the course of that timeframe, reading strategies and vocabulary development is occurring as they get more proficient with that specific text.
What do you think my dog can do over here?
Dog!
You think?
Jake, oh, they're going to chase me.
What?
They're going to chase me.
Oh! It does have a jig. Good job, Jake does. All right, let's read it.
My dog can jog.
Excellent.
Another component of our Balanced Literacy Initiative is the Reading Mini Lesson. A Reading Mini Lesson is a concise lesson with a focus on a specific reading skill or reading concept that students can apply later when they're independently reading and writing. For example, if they're studying transition words, they can apply that to their writing at their desk later on when they're working independently.
After 10 years, where do you think that one's going to go?
Uh, first.
Why do you think first?
Because it's the last one.
Mm-hmm. After 10 years, so that cactus, remember how little it was after 10 years? It was only about the size of our hand. It was small.
Another component of Balanced Literacy that we've put in place here at Goliad is the Guided Reading. That's where kids and teachers are interacting at their table based on their reading ability. What you'd see at a guided reading table is kids reading their text independently sometimes, or sometimes the teacher will be listening to them one-on-one. Sometimes they'll be just scratching on the table, writing what they're talking about at that specific time for that book. Definitely, one of the benefits of guided reading is that you do have a teacher who's working with students on their instructional level, which is allowing that student to move forward with guidance from the teacher that they would not have done independently.
Break it apart.
Yes, good job.
The final piece is the coaching, where Scholastic come in monthly. They actually lead our PLC for our ELAR teachers, and then they discuss what they're going to concentrate on for the next visit, and then they go into classrooms and observe the teacher, and then they turn around immediately that day and have a coaching conversation with that teacher, so they can discuss what they watched, discuss what they want to focus on the next time, and to continue moving forward.
With answering the question, but then also explaining to their partner why they're thinking what they're thinking.
Again, ultimately, our goal and our charge here at elementary is to foster that love of reading, and we feel like we've been able to do that through Balanced Literacy. And we are super excited to continue to see our teachers and our students grow.
That was just a little peek into what it's like in an elementary classroom, and those things are going on across the district, and so we're very, very proud of that. So next, Candy Callis is going to share with us and her team just a brief secondary update.
Thank you so much for letting us share our work with you this evening. It's a pleasure. Again, I'm Candy Callis, and this is Michelle. She's going to come up in just a second. And so this year was our first year to really push a Balanced Literacy model of instruction into a secondary setting. If you talk with many people around the state or even the nation, you'll know that this is, we're kind of doing groundbreaking work here. Not many districts are embarking in this type of instruction in secondary setting, so I'm very proud to be a part of this work. So we are also working with Scholastic in, at all of our middle schools. So we have four consultants, one for each middle school, and then one specifically working with our comprehension clubs, which is a class that we have in sixth grade, just to, again, build that additional time for literacy. And we have, our focus has been, the first semester is really focusing on the whole-group mini lessons, so teaching secondary teachers what an Interactive Read Aloud or Shared Reading, Close Reading, things like that are, because a lot of these concepts are new instructional practices for them. And so we had initial onsite professional learning for each of the three middle schools in their teacher teams, so they got to work in small settings. And then the Scholastic coach actually went and delivered a lesson using that specific instructional strategy. So the teachers were able to view it onsite with the coach modeling for them and then debrief after. And then the coaching, both from our Scholastic consultants in person and virtually, from October till now, January, has focused on the implementation of what they learned in that professional learning session. So are they able to deliver an effective whole-group mini lesson? Are they able to use each of the three strategies that we talked about? And then our focus second semester, so our next professional learning is actually happening next week, and it'll be the same format, on campuses, teacher teams. And then we're going to introduce to them the concept of small group instruction. Many of our secondary teachers, again, this is a new concept for them. I don't know how many of you can remember sitting with a middle school or high school teacher with just three or four other students. I would assume probably not many. But really, it's a way for us to truly focus on meeting the needs of individual and small-group students and differentiating to meet their needs. So once they have that next professional learning series next week, then the coaching will shift. So the Scholastic coaches, as well as the instructional coaches on campus, will support the implementation of the small group instruction while still supporting what we learned first semester. And we do have some feedback from some of our teachers, which I think Michelle's sharing. So we had a Google form at the end of our professional learning, and I'll let Michelle tell you about that.
So we really want to give the teachers an opportunity to have a voice in what they're learning and how they're implementing it in their classroom. So we are, we always try to get feedback from them. So this was one of the quotes that the teacher gave us, and I can't really read it from there, hold on. "I really appreciate the explanation and demonstration of the differences between a shared reading, interactive read aloud, and closed reading. I have done these in other classes, but didn't connect the terminology with the practice. After seeing the interactive read aloud modeled, I was easily able to identify where my other experience, I have used this practice, and I am less nervous about implementing it into my classroom. In fact, I'm planning on doing one in class on Tuesday." So that was some of the feedback. So we knew that they were comfortable with their Scholastic coaches. Now that we've been going and working with the teachers, sometimes they don't know how to maybe reteach a concept, or they get stuck, and their first response is, "Oh, I need to contact my Scholastic coach." So they have that open communication with their Scholastic coaches also. So we were really excited about the feedback we're getting back from the teachers, and then we also have an open communication with the Scholastic coaches. We try to meet with them, or they'll email us if they have questions, and they're really good about looking at what we're teaching each semester and kind of making sure that they're following our map, our curriculum, and making sure that they're helping the teachers in all the needs that they have. So I just wanted to share that. We do have a lot of great teacher feedback.
So as you can hear, this is really quite a successful initiative. We are seeing so many positives with this and great feedback that we're hearing from teachers, students, and we're listening to that student voice and getting that feedback from them as well, and parents. So I encourage you to, you know, as we, we're welcoming you to come and visit some classrooms with us sometime, if you like. It's really kind of an amazing experience to go in there and see the reading that is happening across the district. So once again, thank you so much for your support. We're seeing some remarkable things from this amazing endeavor, and we really, really do appreciate the support that you have provided as a school board. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Questions or comments from board team? Go ahead, Amy.
Hi. So I have a fourth grader who, like the little boy you talked about, has, she's always been a strong reader, but really didn't like to read in the past, and this year has been monumental in the changes that we've seen. And just like that little boy during Christmas break, she was reading books, and we were jokingly teasing her, going like, "What are you doing? Reading? You never read." But so excited that she loves reading, and so thank you for bringing that program here, because we've really seen a great change. And also, her teacher is so excited about everything, too, and that's really what I think has made the difference.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Amy. Other questions or comments? I know anything that allows it, gets a child to read rather than play with a video game is a huge success. So thank you. Thank y'all for y'all's efforts and ongoing efforts, and we look forward to continued improvement. And we're so excited about things that we've got going on, so thank y'all for y'all's hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. Ritter, for that report, and ladies, thank y'all for being here. Our next item's item D. Carl's got a little bit, something to report on our partnership with Goodfellow.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, members of the board, just a reminder that we have really a robust and ongoing relationship with Goodfellow Air Force Base. I serve on the Military Affairs Committee, and we have monthly meetings, as well as next Thursday, the Goodfellow Community Partnerships Meeting takes place. And so we are privileged and honored to participate in the tour of Goodfellow Air Force Base. I believe that's this Thursday, actually. So I just want to remind our audience and viewers that we certainly continue our partnerships with Goodfellow, and that benefits our entire community.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. I think almost 10% of our student population is at Goodfellow. Is that, I think that's correct? So we appreciate that. Our next items are consent items, item eight, items A through C. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve consent items A through C.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker, and a second from Dr. Kingman. Do we have any questions or comments? Item A is to ratify administration's action and sale of properties. These are properties that we're selling in conjunction with the city or county. Item B is to consider bid number 19-020, which is for miscellaneous supplies, and item C is to consider bid number 19-021. All of these items were previously discussed at our board workshop, our pre-agenda board workshop. Any questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of December 2019.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of December 2019. Do we have any comments or questions?
Just a note to those watching on Channel 4, that we reviewed all those reports in our pre-agenda meeting in depth. And also, for any of those wanting to see any of this material at all, it's all posted on our website, saisd.org, under the Financial Transparency tab.
Thanks, Bill. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our audit, 2018-2019 audit. Dr. Blair, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Follow the protocol. She's right.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. Or you could speak from there, either one. If the mics working, that's fine.
We have our auditor here tonight, Jeremy Stevens. He's a partner with Aide Bailey out of Abilene. They completed the audit, and you have a copy of that, I hope. Send one to you. Before I do that, I want to introduce the folks who make all this happen in San Angelo ISD. These three folks back here, Hope, Cynthia.
Hi. I'm sorry. Ignorance is bliss, and I'm very comfortable. So, no. Mr. Stevens, would you come forward, please, and explain the audit?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Yes, my name is Jeremy Stevens. I'm a partner with Aide Bailey, and our firm has completed its audit of the financial statements of the district as of and for the year ended August 31, 2019. A copy of those financial statements was previously provided. Also, I have a short presentation to go over some of the financial highlights. Before I get into it, though, I do just want to say that I think the audit went very well this year. As you know, this was our first year to perform the audit of financial statements of the district, which always adds a bit of a wrinkle. We're trying to understand your district and understand how you operate, and I think your personnel are getting used to the way that we audit. But I think kudos to all of, everybody in the business office. I think they did a great job. They were very accessible, answered all of our questions very timely, got us the documentation that we needed, really helped the audit process go quite smoothly. Like I said, the audit went very well. We did not have any adjusting journal entries as a result of our audit procedures. We did not identify any unadjusted misstatements. We are not reporting any material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting, and we did not identify any instances of non-compliance. Like I said, just an overall really good, clean audit year. So that being said, I'll get into the presentation, and I'll walk through the financial statements as well. If you have a copy of those financial statements, our auditor's report, it starts on page number nine, goes on through page number 11. And our report, it makes three main points, which are summarized up on the slide. First of all, it does indicate that management is responsible for the preparation and the presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Additionally, it indicates that management is responsible for the design and implementation of internal controls. It then goes on to describe our responsibility as auditor. As your auditor, our responsibility is to express an opinion as to whether the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Additionally, there's some narrative that describes our approach to internal controls, which is that we gain an understanding of the district's internal controls to design our audit procedures, but we do not test those controls to an extent that allows us to express an opinion on them. So we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. And lastly, is our opinion, which is found at the top of page number 10. If you were to read that, it states that, "In our opinion, these financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district." This is what's known as an unmodified opinion for the financial statements or a clean audit report. It's the highest level of assurance that our firm can provide on a set of financial Moving on to some of the basic financial statements themselves, the first that I'll touch on is the Statement of Net Position, which starts on page number 21 and then goes on over to page number 22. Now, this particular statement provides a snapshot of all assets and liabilities of the district as of August 31, 2019, at a consolidated level. I have a very summarized version of that statement included on the slide with a comparative column for 2018. As you'll note, at the end of the 2019 fiscal year, total assets were approximately 292 As you'll note, at the end of the 2019 fiscal year, total assets were approximately $292 million. In comparison to the previous fiscal year, those total assets were about $281 million. So total assets have increased approximately $11 million year over year. If you look at the individual categories within, included within the financial statements, largest driver of that increase is included in the deferred outflows of financial resources, which are related to your net pension and your net other post-employee benefit plan. As for liabilities, total liabilities and deferred inflows for the financial, for the district as of August 31st, 2019, approximately $229 million this fiscal year. In the previous fiscal year, it was approximately $212 million. So total liabilities have increased approximately $17 million year over year. And again, if you look at the individual line items, including the financial statements that drove that increase, it's largely related to your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability, and then the related deferred inflow. So I guess, big picture with this statement, both assets and liabilities are up, largely due to items related to your pension and your OPEB. As far as those net pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities, I'll remind you that the district has to take on a portion of those liabilities from the overall TRS pension plans. It's not a liability that the district is going to have to repay this fiscal year or even in the next few fiscal years. It's a actuarially calculated number that estimates the total future payments to all current employees and retirees of the district over their, over their lifetime. The way that the district funds into the plan is going to remain the same, so that your payments into the TRS plans should remain the same in future. Again, this is just, it's, like I said, an actuarially calculated liability. The next statement that I'll mention is the Balance Sheet of Governmental Funds, which starts on page number 24. Again, I've summarized it up on the slide with a comparative column for 2018. You'll note that total assets at the end of this fiscal year were approximately $57 million. Total assets in the previous fiscal year were approximately $58 million. I will point out also that, on this particular financial statement, it is a little bit different in the Statement of Net Position, in that this statement, it's presented on what's known as the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. This statement's focus is on current obligations and the district's current assets to meet. There are no, capital assets included, there are no long-term liabilities such as the net pension liability or the OPEB liability. There's no bonds payable. It is, it is current liabilities and current assets. Like I mentioned, total assets under this basis of account are $57 million at the end of this current fiscal year. If you compare each category year over year, you'll see that the decrease is largely in the long-term investments. Those long-term investments are down to about $3.2 million this year, which is offset by an increase in the cash and short-term investments. Cash and short-term investments are up to about $43 million this year. Liabilities are very comparable year over year. It's about $12 million in each year. If you add up your assets less your liabilities, you get your total fund balance at year-end total fund balance for the current fiscal year, approximately $45 million. In the previous fiscal year, it was approximately $46.6 million. So there was a decrease year in, year over year in total fund balance. This particular slide I've added to show the makeup of that fund balance year over year and the various classifications. You'll note that the unassigned fund balance in the current fiscal year is approximately $26.5 million. That is the amount that is available to the district to fund future operating activities of the district. One measure that you can use to gauge the health of that unassigned fund balance is to compare it to your average monthly general fund expenditures. Generally, TEA recommends that you keep somewhere between two to three times your average monthly general fund expenditures. I did the calculation for the district as of August 31st, 2019, based on fiscal year 2019 expenditures, and I calculated out 2.8 times your average monthly general fund expenditures. So that indicates that the district is in line with the TEA recommendation. And the last statement that I will touch on is the Statement of Revenues and Expenses and Changes in Fund Balance, which is on page 26. Again, I've summarized it on the slide. You'll note that total revenues for the district in the current fiscal year were approximately $143 million. In the previous fiscal year, they were approximately $142. You'll note that local revenues have increased year over year. Local revenues are up to about $67 million this year. Those increases in local revenues largely driven by increases in your property tax revenue and then investment earnings. Then that was offset a little bit by a reduction in your state revenues. State revenues are down to about $57 million. And lastly, as far as expenditures, you'll note that expenditures are approximately $145 million in the current fiscal year. In the previous fiscal year, it was approximately $141 million. So total expenditures have increased approximately $4.3 million year over year, or about 3%. So it's pretty, pretty average increase in expenditures. Each expenditure category by function is pretty comparable year over year. Your largest expenditure category is your instruction expenditures. It's approximately $76 million this year. That represents approximately 53.1% total district. That was everything for the financial statements. There are two other reports that I'll briefly touch on that we're issuing. Those are included in the back of the audited financial statements. The first starts on page number 112, and this is our Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Noncompliance. This particular report reiterates that we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. However, if we reported any material weaknesses in internal controls or any instances of noncompliance, they would be reported here. Again, happy to report that there were no such items identified this year. And lastly is our Report on Compliance in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. That is started on page number 114. As a part of the district's audit, we select a federal program or two that we consider to be the district's major programs. And then we test the district's administration of those programs, that we can express an opinion as to whether the district applied with the requirements of those programs. In this particular fiscal year, we tested the Child Nutrition Program and the Head Start Program as major federal programs. Our opinion on those programs is found at the bottom of page number 114. Basically, it says that, in our opinion, the district did comply in all material respects with the requirements of those programs. So again, this is an unmodified opinion on compliance or a clean opinion on compliance for those major. I believe that is everything that I had prepared. Like I said, I think it was a very good, good audit year, very clean. I think, kudos to your people, they did a great job getting everything ready for us, and really did, like I said, help the audit go quite smoothly. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Questions from anyone? Some really good information in the historical part of that, and it's kind of interesting to see, you know, who the largest taxpayers are in San Angelo, so that's in there. And certainly, as you pointed out, it's ironic, as we, as local revenues increase, state revenues decrease. So that's much different than other taxing entities. A lot of others, the city and county, for example, if their taxes go up, then they get to spend all that. If our taxes go up, local effort goes up, then we don't necessarily get to reap the benefits of that, because the state reduces our funding. So, and when I got on the board, I think the state provided about 54% of funding, and today it looks like they provide about 45% of funding. So their, their portion of the cost of education continues to shrink. So thankfully, we've got a community that's growing and a tax base that's, that allows us to educate our students. Other questions or?
Majority of our money was in instruction.
That's correct, yeah. Obviously, the majority of our money is in instruction, and that has to do with salaries and personnel. There's great reports in the back that have to do with the number of employees we have, the tenure of those employees, how much turnover we have on an annual basis. So some really good reports in the back portion of our audit. Other questions or comments? Dr. Dela?
Mr. Lehman, first, again, I just want to thank our business office, many members who are here with us this evening, especially in a, in an era of transition. You guys pulled off another complete, thorough, and clean audit. I want to thank you all and your, and your firm. We've had a long-term relationship with our previous auditor, and I think it speaks highly of our financial condition in SAISD, that we've had multiple auditors now, even in the, just the last two years, and that both audits have come back extremely clean. And so I just want to thank our group for doing that. So even though we know that an A-through-F system can be flawed, what would you provide our district on an audit if this was a report card?
I'm not, I'm not a teacher, so I'm not one to usually provide any grades.
I believe I heard the highest level of assurance. What does that equate to?
It was the highest level of assurance, yes. So I suppose you could translate.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to put Mr. Stevens on the spot? Questions or comments? Thank you again for the work. We appreciate the relationship. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. And I echo Dr. Dela's comments. Thanks to our team and our finance department. Great work. I know when we do our budgeting, we say the same thing, but we appreciate y'all's effort, so thank you. We need a motion to approve our audit as our audit report.
Move for approval?
We have a motion from Mr. Denon, a second from Mr. Parker, to approve our 2018-2019 audit report. Any further board comments or questions? Do we have any public comment? I know Hope would love to get up here and speak. Doctor? Sure, yes, sir.
My apologies to him.
Yeah.
I'm supposed to name, I don't know your.
It's okay. I forget Bill's name sometimes, so it's okay. No comments from the public? If not, all call our motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks again, Jeremy. We appreciate you being here and appreciate the great work of Ida Bailey. Our next item is, Dr. Gomez is going to go over, which is item 11, Consider Early Notice of Resignation Incentive.
To move this down, I'm a little, little shorter than the last speaker. As we prepare staffing and budget projections for next school year, we would like to propose the continuation of the early notice of resignation incentive we have offered the past nine years. The early notice of resignation incentive allows principals and administrators to more efficiently prepare staffing and budgeting projections, reduces the need for transferring teachers throughout the district at a late date, it's advantageous in hiring the best applicants in the spring and early summer, and it assists the district in knowing how many contract employees will not return the following year. The incentive includes $500 paid to contract employees who provide written notice of their end-of-year resignation between the dates of Monday, February 3rd, through Friday, March 20th. The incentive would be paid on April 23rd, 2020. For a snapshot glance of the incentive program, this graph kind of captures the historical trends over the years. It really allows those teachers that know they're moving on to retirement, they're relocating due to family, to notify their administrator in advance. And then as we move into recruiting, principals, and department leaders know staff and are more better prepared on the positions they need to fill. We thank you for your consideration, as we're fully committed to hiring high-quality staff that will create the conditions of our San Angelo ISD learner profile and our educator profile. Are there any questions I can assist with?
Questions for Dr. Gomez? You did a good job. Thanks for explaining that. It's important that we remind everyone that this just allows us to prepare. Any business is better run if they have a good idea of which employees are going to come back in the future, so. And historically, at least in the last five or six years, this has pretty, been pretty constant, costs the district between about $32,000 and $35,000 annually for us to allow for this incentive. Further questions or comments for Dr. Gomez? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the early notice of resignation incentive that's been outlined by Dr. Gomez.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Parker, and a second from Dr. Kingman. Do we have any further board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. I'll cover the announcements. We are going to go briefly into executive session. We're going to do that for real, for, under Texas Government Code 551072, which is to discuss real property, and under Texas Government Code 551074, which is to discuss personnel matters. So we'll do that. Prior to going, we'll, our announcements are our finance and pre-agenda workshop is February 10th, and our regular board meeting is February the 18th, which is, I'll remind everyone, it's on a Tuesday rather than on a Monday, much like this month. Do we have any board comments or anything we need to put on our agenda for next month's meeting? If not, we'll go into closed session and return shortly. Okay, we're back from closed session. We took no official action while we were in closed session, and we're, we finished what we needed to do this evening, so here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.